I'm here today with Mayor Art Meyer, and we are here to provide you with a recap of the council meeting workshop from Monday night and the regular council meeting from Monday evening. So we started out the night, Mayor, with a workshop that started at 5:30, and it was to review the many long-range plans that we have of the city. We started out the workshop with a review of the personal improvement plan. Marcia Reyna, the HR Director, provided that review and update to the City Council. And then Sandra Gibson provided y'all with a report on the capital outlay plan. Both of those plans are five-year plans. And then Sandra Gibson and Paul Hackelman held the, or reviewed the capital improvements plan, five-year plan with the City Council. So Sandra did more of the financial background and overview of the projects, and Paul provided y'all more with an update, status-type deal of each of the projects. There was no action taken on any of those items. They all will appear on your September 13th agenda for adoption and approval by the council. So that's the reason why we had the workshop. So it's a lot to take in at one time, and staff wanted to make sure that y'all had plenty of time to review the documents and get familiar with them. They all, in some form or fashion, tie into the overall proposed budget that was submitted to you back on August 1st. So there's some overlap there.
Pretty much just people stuff, money we're spending, and then money we're gonna spend.
That's right.
And as you said, that's a five-year plan. And I thought the presentations were very good, very enlightening and educational.
They are. They always are.
They are.
Yeah, and so this year, we did, as you know, Mayor, the two-year budgets for the operating budget. So eventually, the plan is to get them all on that five-year cycle so that they all show the overlap from year to year.
And this was the first year for the two-year.
That's right.
Okay. All right, now, after that, we went in to our regular council meeting. We started out at 6:47. Here during the budget process, most of our City Council meetings do start late because the workshops run a little longer. I'd rather them run longer and get more information out than just to cut them short to meet a time limitation. Then we started the meeting out with the part I didn't want to do. And we did the presentation to Ms. Gardner here for her service with the city. This will be another last today. Be the last recap that you and I will do together. It didn't go as well and smooth as I planned, but as I mentioned, we'll talk about it more later on. But all your service, we appreciate it very much. All the staff, the outpouring of support and displeasure with your leaving from the staff says a lot for you and what you've done. So I don't want to get off track again by going into that.
Well, I would like to just tell you, Mayor, how much I appreciate you as the leader of the city and how lucky I feel to have had the opportunity to work with you since you were elected in May of 2019. I think everybody in the public knows, I know the employees know, that the start here was somewhat rocky. And unfortunate as it was, and most of it wasn't up my making. It was what it was, and we had to deal with it. And I think, you know, when you were elected, as you have said many times publicly, we haven't always seen eye to eye, and we didn't necessarily start off on the best foot. But we agreed that it was in the best interest of the city that we worked together and figure out how to work together. And boy, what amazing professional relationship we've developed over the time. And I really appreciate that. It took effort on both of our parts. And so I couldn't have done it by myself without your willingness and vice versa. And I really can't thank you enough. And then certainly, a huge thank you to the city employees. You're absolutely right. The outpouring of support has been tremendous, not just since the announcement and this week being my last week, but I felt that from the employees from day one. And so it's been tremendous, and I really appreciate that. And then the current council, thank you so much for the nice award the other night. I really appreciate that.
Well, thank you. And as I've said, we do have a unique working relationship. We agreed when I was elected that we would have our differences in the offices, and we would present a united front to the public and the council. And I think we've done that. I just have all the admiration in the world for you for the relationship that we've had, the things you've taught me. As I said the other night, you've made me a better mayor. I'm saying a little firmer voice today than I did that first night handing you the award. Just kind of drove home what a sad day it was. But let's just get on to the meeting. It's really been great work for you.
Well, thank you. I feel the same way.
Wish you all the luck in Corpus Christi, the windy city down there by the ocean with the breeze and the hurricanes and all the stuff that comes with it. But from the bottom of my heart, really, I wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you.
So now we got that out of the way.
We did have some announcements, too, Mayor. If you want to mention, you want me to mention some of those announcements?
The big one was the September 11th celebration that will be at the firehouse, the fire station, I believe, is 07.
7:25.
7:25. And I'd like to see a lot of people show up for that. As I mentioned during the announcement, 20 years. There are so many people in the cities that have real no recollection of what that was. I can tell you where I was the day that it happened and everything moving forward. But it's a sad part of our nation's history, but it's a part of our history. And if you don't study history and pay attention to history, you're bound to make the same mistakes. So I encourage anybody that can attend to attend. If you can't attend, there's gonna be a lot of television exposure. Watch it, teach our children. I've got grandchildren that have no clue as to what it was.
That day certainly was, for me, what it showed me was just how many people and what sacrifices people are willing to make to be able to have the freedoms that we have in this country. The citizens that, you know, stood up to the terrorist on that plane that went down in the field in Pennsylvania. That's definitely bravery at its finest as well as, you know, standing up for what you believe in. So a lot of thoughts and prayers to those family members that lost loved ones that day.
It was a period that brought the nation together. For a while there, we were a nation that had come together. We've since fractured. We're headed off in different directions. Hopefully, we can bring it back together again without an event like that. So, and then, any other?
Yeah, Mr. Neal, Mayor Protem Neal, mentioned about the bulk waste forum that Deanna Lee put together. She did a great job with that. And we just encourage y'all to go to the website. You'll find that forum, and you can comment on it. If you have any questions about it, I would recommend that you reach out to Deanna Lee, and she'll be able to assist you with that effort. And hopefully, we get a lot of comments from it because I know that you, Mayor, have stood up the ad hoc committee for bulk waste, and you can utilize the input from the citizens in making those decisions.
Yes, the ad hoc committee. Again, we encourage the citizens to go to the website. Give us your comments, positive comments, and the things that we can move forward with. And the ad hoc committee will review those. This is an opportunity. You know, we hear a lot from the citizens that they don't get any input, they don't, that their voice isn't heard. Well, this is your opportunity. Go to the website, give us your suggestions, your ideas, and the ad hoc committee will look at.
So it's a speak now or forever hold your peace, right, Mayor?
Pretty much.
Yeah, absolutely. So they have their opportunity. And then Mayor Protem also announced National Dog Day. I did not know that.
I didn't either.
But he made that announcement.
And on Dog Day, go visit our animal shelter. Go get you, as Mayor Protem calls it, a furry little friend. The last thing, I don't think I mentioned it, but I will mention it here. September 1st, we've had our last council meeting, unless we have a special one called. But we've had our last council meeting where the citizens are allowed to write in to have their comments read into the record. Effective September 1st, the governor's taken that away. So just again, a reminder for that. So with that, we had moved into our consent agenda. Mundane stuff, an agreement between the city and the WEDC for reimbursement, holiday schedule, monthly financial report, like I said, really not much. Public hearing, we opened, had two public hearings. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. And we did vote on that, but it will come back to council one more time for final approval. I know there were several people that thought because we voted on it, it's a done deal. It's not. That one will come back.
Yeah, so just for further clarification, Mayor, for the public, state law requires that the budget go to a public hearing to allow, the proposed budget that is, go to a public hearing to allow for public input. And then it also further requires the council to accept, not adopt, not approve, but accept the proposed budget as it was presented by the city manager. And what that means is, is that the council's just agreeing that they don't need any changes to it at this time. And so then, the actual adoption, approval of the budget will occur on September 13th. So there is still time if the council decided, or if there's citizens that want to provide input, there will be an opportunity that night for them to do it there as well.
And we had one citizen speak.
That is correct.
During this public hearing.
We did.
So again, this is your opportunity to come talk to us, the council. We don't know what you want or what you think if you do not, excuse me, come and talk to us. That public hearing opened at 7:07, closed at 7:19. So it was relatively short. The second one was much shorter. We had a public hearing on the Wataga Economic Corporation proposed budget. It started at 7:21, ended at 7:23. Just a presentation by finance and no citizens wishing to speak. Oh, then we went into action items. The first one, ordinance authorizing the city for the tax and limited pledge. And I'll just, that's money stuff, and I'll just turn that over to you.
All right, so the City Council authorized, and we actually started the process back in May. State law requires us to go through a series of notices, a notice period to allow for public comment before the actual issuance date. And Monday night was the approval of the sale of those certificates of obligation. The total amount of the issuance was $4.7 million. 3.7 million of the 4.7 was for street projects. So a large number, or large amount, I should say, of the money that was issued is gonna be utilized for streets. And then $1 million went towards the purchase of capital equipment. We got some great rates, Mayor, as you and I were aware. When the bids came in at 11 o'clock that morning, the award was made to FHN, and at 157, 1.57%. That's pretty good. That's a pretty low rate. So we were very grateful for that low rate. And Martin McLean pointed out that the, one of the top things that gets us such good rates is the management of the city and, in particular, finances. And he commented that it was excellent. And that's the reason why we were able to get such a good rate. So many thanks to Sandra Gibson and her entire team in the Finance Department. They worked so great with the city manager's office, and it's been a pleasure working with them and do a great job.
That they do. In fact, just a couple months ago, they got another award. We presented it at the council meeting. We seem to be getting a lot of awards. We've got good people, good staff, and they all do a good job. All right. And just tell us, because we had to sign those documents during the meeting, I mean, immediately upon approval of that. And the reason we had to do that was because we had to sign them, they had to be stamped, and it had to be faxed to his corporate office before the rate changed.
That's right.
So if anybody's wondering why we had to stop the meeting to sign. Second item, let's see.
At that point, we actually adjourned into executive session, Mayor.
Well, that's right.
We went out of order because we had some individuals waiting in the audience, so we adjourned into executive session.
We did, so I have to change my pages here and go back to which ones we did. We went into executive session.
We recessed at 7:35 the first time for executive session.
Yes, yeah, and came back out at 9:02. So even that short one was the lengthy one. And we discussed economic incentives for SP Ventures, economic incentives for FSG, which was Excel Education. Those were the only two we discussed in that first one.
That's correct.
And we came out and made motions on both of those and adopted those as presented. Those were items that those companies have requested that if at all possible, we get those completed and approved prior to Ms. Gardner leaving, which again is a positive thing for how you've handled things, that these companies want to get things done while you're still here.
I've been working with SP Ventures for well over two years now, so it's been a long time. And the ask from the companies, Mayor, was a fair ask. I've seen and in the past worked on million-dollar incentive programs. And this particular program, they're asking for $140,000 of incentives from the city. So that's a pretty small ask for what the city should gain from this. And the good thing about doing it the way that the city's done it is that the developer has to perform before they're entitled to opinion. So it will guarantee us a little over $3.5 million investment on Denton Highway and probably close to $1 million and a half to $2 million on roof snow. So that'll, both of those corridors, that'd be very good for the city, bringing in some additional tax, sales tax revenue for the city. And you know what we had lost in the prior 10 years. It'd be nice to have some gains.
Yes, and their projections, is it gonna be a significant impact?
It is.
If their projections come through, there will be a significant impact on our tax base. So, and I know a lot of people out there go, $140,000. You know, you just made a statement, that's a small ask. It's a large ask, or most of us may go, $140,000. But what we're gonna get back in tax revenue and property taxes and such, it does make it a small amount. And the council, this is one that's gone back and forth several times. It's not like they came in and said, this is what we want, and the council rolled over. A lot of back and forth, go-betweens. I know you invested in that particular one a lot of time. But it's a win-win. It's a win for them and a win for the city. So when we came back out of executive session, the next item was the Crime Control Prevention Budget. We adopted that. That went smooth. The Economic Development Corporation budget was the next item. We approved that. Item number four, Resolution for Business Retention. I'll let you take that one since that was your baby.
Yes, so the digital signs that you see on Wataga Road on both the east and west end, this item was actually on the WEDC agenda just the week before. And it was amending the agreement between the city and the EDC, authorizing a third sign that will be placed along Hightower. And those signs are available for our businesses to advertise their businesses on at a fair premium. So that's basically what that item was all about, is amending the agreement that was done back in 2019 to allow for that third sign and for us to go ahead and construct and have that sign installed along Hightower.
Yeah, that project, when it first started, we initially looked at five signs. And we're down to three. And then speaking of signs, we have the new sign over at Cap Smith Park, a new digital sign.
It has power. It has power now.
Yes, it does.
Yep.
Yeah, we saw that the other day, walking over there. Yeah, go to Cap Smith, look at it. It's a good improvement. Let's see. Item five was discuss action on, oh, amending Chapter Two. Oh, that was, that was just a long-drawn-out. Those of you that watched that painful council meeting where we discussed that, as I've said many times, we don't move at the speed of UPS. We move at the speed of government. And, you know, you hear a lot of comments about people and breaking Toma, backdoor deals and all that. That meeting was just an example of, we cannot, as a council, as a governing body, discuss things except on the dais. And painful as it might be, some of those things, and one of those will be here in the next couple of minutes, it just drags out. But that's the way the government works. But we finally got it approved, got the changes in there that the council wanted. And our next one is Chapter Four, I believe.
Chapter Four will actually come in November, so I think we're gonna.
Yeah, after the election.
Yeah, after the election. I think we're gonna jump into Chapter Six. I don't know if it'll get done in time before the election to have it before the council. So Chapter Four may end up being the next one that the council sees, but staff is gonna begin working on Chapter Six.
All right, and then let's see. After that, we went, oh, changing the ordinance on licensing permits and business regulations.
Yeah, so that was another project that came forward from the Economic Development Corporation purchase some business registration software through GovPilot with the assistance of our city's fire marshal. He has been working with the businesses to get them all registered when he goes out and does his fire inspection. And because each business is required to complete a fire inspection once a year, he started that in November. So by November of, or by the end of October of this year, all the businesses should be registered that are a business in the city. And this ordinance just made it a requirement for businesses to register with the city. And as I mentioned in the council meeting, Mayor, the other night, the winter storm Muri and COVID have highlighted the need for the city to have accurate information on our businesses. It's not because, you know, we want to be big government. It's because we want to be able to partner with our businesses and assist our businesses. And the best way for us to do that sometimes is by email or by phone call. And if we don't have accurate information for our businesses, that makes that a larger challenge.
It does, and I know one of the problems, and I just used the Target shopping center there. One of the businesses had the pipes burst. We couldn't contact anybody. And it is true, I believe somebody mentioned it at the meeting. We have the fire boxes where the fire department can get into there. But even if we do that, we still have to be able to notify somebody.
Right.
I mean, if I own a business and the fire department's entered my building, I'd kind of like to know. So yeah, we can get in for the emergency things through the firebox, but we still need to notify. And during the last year that we've been doing the business visits, we get both sides of the fence there where people are going like, I don't want the city emailing me. And other people going, we want the city to be in contact with us.
And would actually thank us for contacting them.
Yes, and that's what I was just fixing to say. How many people during COVID, because I know you put in a lot of extra hours actually helping people fill out forms, but how many people came to you and thanked you because we had their email address? And how many came to us and complained and said the city didn't tell us anything because we had no way of contacting them? So it's a double-edged sword there, but it did bring light to the need. So, let's see. Then we went, approved the bid for water supply, water, sewer, and utility parts as the thing was presented. Just not really, just nothing urgent or earth-shattering. All right, then we came to the part that took up most of the night. This, again, another example of we move at the speed of government. Items eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 were board appointments. For those that don't know, board appointments are my responsibility, I believe, except the civil service. Followed under the responsibilities of the mayor, and I recommend to council appointments, reappointments, and/or removals, and council has to approve it. So that's why there were so many items there. We've, Chapter 12, we've brought everything under one umbrella, for lack of a better term. Before, we were all over the board, January, June, August. So everything comes due in August now.
Except for the Charter Review Commission.
Yes.
That one stays in June because the charter requires it to. So I think at the next charter review, Mayor, if you remember to bring that up to the commission when they're doing that, that I think they would be agreeable to propose to the citizens that you change that to August 31 as well.
And we had a lot of lively discussion on these appointments and reappointments. And just let me take this opportunity to say that every council member has their individual thoughts on these things, and I respect every one of them for those. And as I've mentioned to council members before, you vote your conscience. Vote what you think is best for the city. And, you know, with, you know, just vote it. And if you feel that strongly about it, we had this with the P&amp;Z the other day, and I recommended to one of the board members. If you feel that strongly about it, get it out there.
Speaker.
It may look like arguing to some people. I got asked that question yesterday about the arguing with the council. And it's not really arguing, it's discussion.
It's debate.
Better words, debate. And when all said and done, whatever the vote of the council is, I support 100%. And the council members, whether they're on the losing side or the winning side, they support, I'm losing my voice here, they support each other. And that's what makes it fun, makes it enjoyable.
And I think it's good, too, Mayor, that people realize just how important these appointments are for the city because these are representatives of the city. There are different organizations that they become involved in. They also attend events and stuff where they represent the city. So you have to be certain that you're selecting those individuals that not only have the qualifications to serve on the board, but that also are gonna have a very positive face for the city as well as their time serving on the board. So there's time commitment. There's a lot of things that have to be considered when you're looking at these appointments. So it seems like it should be something that would go pretty simple and smooth. But it's a very serious responsibility that the council has, appointing these board members.
It is, it is. And unfortunately, I did have to remove some people from their positions on the boards. The law changed, requiring cybersecurity for everybody that's on the boards.
If they have an official city email account, yes.
Yes, and so there were some that did not accomplish that, and unfortunately, I did have to remove them.
Well, it's kind of hard to communicate, since we do our agendas and stuff through our Civic Plus, or Civic Clerk, which communicates to our board members through email, it's kind of hard for them to know if, you know, we're not able to communicate with them because they don't have email access because the law says if they don't complete the training, we must, you know, take action.
Yes.
And so the action that we take is we turn off their access. And so if they don't have access, then they can't, they can't look at the packets. They can't even know that they're posted because the email notification system lets them know when to post those agendas.
They can't review their packets before they come to the meeting. And once they come to the meetings, they get up on the dais, they can't access the computers there.
Just so the citizens know, because you may get some of these, Mayor. The citizens will say, yeah, they can because they're on the website. The citizens will say, yeah, they can because they're on the website. That's the public packet. Oftentimes, there are confidential documents included in the board member packet or the council packet that the public doesn't see. And it's not that the citizens or the city, excuse me, is hiding information. That information is confidential for various reasons, and most of the times, it's confidential by law. So that's the reason why they're not out there on the website. So the board will not be fully informed if they do not have the appropriate access.
And council and myself, a lot of times, will deal with companies that are asking for something, and you just assign a number to them, that myself or the council, we don't know who that vendor or that company is until negotiations proceed down the road.
Well, that bid item that was on the agenda that you talked about earlier, it was a simple item, but that's a perfect example of confidential information. So those vendors submitted bids, and those bids are protected by the law until a bid award is made. So if we publish that as part of the agenda packet to the public, then all of those competitors could see the bid of the lowest bidder, because we have to go by lowest bid typically speaking. Then that gives them, if you don't approve the lowest bidder, because maybe they've had a prior history with the city that wasn't favorable or something else, then now all their competitors know what their bid was, and that's unfair practice. So that's the reason why that information is kept confidential until the award happens.
Yep. But as I call it every once in a while, that pesky law that keeps us from doing some things. All right, so mainly, we got all the board appointments completed, and so we're done with that for another year. I do have some openings still, those of you that would like to come out and be a part of it.
We actually do have quite a few vacancies right now.
Yep, so, let's see. And with that, we went back into executive session again at 10:27. And we were back there for about another hour and 20 minutes. We came out at 11:39. And those items we discussed, appointment, employment, and duties of interim city secretary. We came out of executive session on that, and we have appointed Raquel, and I'm not even going to attempt to say her last name again.
Guajardo.
Because I keep messing that up. We appointed her as the interim city secretary. She's been the deputy city secretary for quite a while now. She's done an outstanding job, and we have all the confidence in the world in her that she will be great moving forward and eventually be moved into the full position as city secretary.
And I would just like to say, Mayor, that I'm very proud and happy for her, and she has done an excellent job as deputy city secretary, and I have complete confidence and faith in her abilities to serve you well as the interim city secretary and hopefully later on, city secretary. So, good luck to Raquel.
Okay. And then, next one we did was legal advice regarding economic incentives for Smiley Transportation. And we came out, you want to tell that one? Again, these are all negotiations that you've been having from ground zero.
Yeah, this is another one that I've been working on for two plus years. And as many of the citizens know, they did relocate from Keller, and they are located on Starnes Road here in Watauga. Since May, they opened up in May here, late May. And they had a much higher ask, but the council ended up only agreeing to $35,000. And like you said earlier, it sounds like a lot to, you know, a citizen, but when you're talking about million dollar companies and stuff, 35,000 is a pretty small ask from companies. So, but the city was happy to be able to provide them with some incentive. Their incentive is not tied to the relocation here as much as it's tied to hiring of additional personnel to serve the community of Watauga. So we're looking forward to a long-lasting relationship, and we actually hope that someday they will expand their business.
All right, and the last two items we had on the executive session, technicalities just kind of, the computer equipment is great as long as it's working.
Yes.
The last two items we had on executive session pertain to Lifestyle Christianity Church. The first item that we did come back out of executive session and take action on, and that was regarding an irrigation well that they would like to dig. And we ended up rescinding our existing ordinance, and if you'd like to explain that again.
Sure, Mayor. So when staff received the original request for a water well permit, there was some uncertainty because water regulations and water rights are quite confusing, and it really does take a lot of legal guidance and assistance to navigate those waters, no pun intended. And so staff did seek legal guidance, and there was a little snafu with the guidance that was provided, and staff had denied the water well permit. And as it turns out, the denial had to be rescinded of their permit request. And so that notification should have been provided to Lifestyle Christianity, that they will be able to move forward with their water well permits.
Doesn't necessarily mean they're going to drill one yet.
That's right.
But they can move forward with the permit. There are attorneys out there that their sole purpose in life is water rights.
Yes.
So. We just thought it was a prudent thing to do was to back out, rescind the permit denial instead of taking the chance of having to go into litigation. Another cost saving there by the council. And then the other item was exchange lease or value of property, again, with Lifestyle Christianity. For some people that don't know, there's an odd-shaped section of the land, let me get my bearing straight here, just west of the splash pad and east of Lifestyle Christianity Church, that church owns a postage stamp section in the middle of there. And they're interested in perhaps negotiating something with it. And that's really all I can say, because it's just negotiations, which, again, with executive session, that's just how that works. So we'll see where that goes with that. They may not want to sell it, or they may, or whatever. And with that, we finished up our executive session at 11:47 PM, another long night. But I think it was a very productive night. A lot of items on the agenda because people just expressed their desire to have it done while you were still with us. And with that, I think we'll wrap up our last recap video together. I'm going to ask Deanna Lee, our media specialist, if you can get one of those cardboard cutouts of Ms. Gardner, so I can send it over there. Or if Chief Parker's going to participate in these, a mask of Ms. Gardner. Anything else you'd like to say? I think we've pretty much said it all as far as our relationship and how much I've cherished it.
I couldn't agree with you more, and I appreciate the time that I was able to serve the city of Watauga very much. So, thank you all very much for your support of my leadership.
As we sing in the Navy, fair winds and following seas. You'll like it down there.
I think so.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good day.